Call the meeting's order.
It is now 5:03. We will, I will, we do have a quorum present, so I will go ahead and read the notice. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, August 20, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Would everyone please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Leading us in prayer tonight is Pastor Donald Hamm from Kingdom Connection Worship Center.
Please bow your heads. Father God, would just thank you for this day, for this is the day that you have made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we thank you that we're able to gather here today, Lord, for times such as this. Father, we pray for our elected leaders, those who you've chosen to place over this city, Lord. We pray for your hand of protection upon them. We pray for this meeting tonight, Lord God, that whatever is set forth for us to accomplish tonight be accomplished in your name. Lord, we thank you for your grace and for your mercy. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I will now read the executive sessions. Executive Session A, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the offer of financial or other incentive to a prospect in relation to a project in the Mid-Cultural District. Executive Session B, Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.0711 Texas Government Code to Receive Legal Advice and Counsel in Connection with Pending Litigation Style and Numbered Brownsville GMS versus the City of Brownsville, Cost Number 2019-DCL-02693 in the 445th Judicial District Court in Cameron County, Texas. Executive Session C, Consultation with Attorney to Receive Confidential Legal Advice Pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a Matter Related to the Establishment of Guidelines for GIBIC Bylaws That Conform to Sections 501 and 504 of the Texas Government Code in Which the Duty of the Attorney to the Governmental Body Under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas Clearly Conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session D, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to Deliberate the Purchase/Exchange/Lease or Value of Real Property in Connection with the 511 Industrial Corridor. Executive Session E, Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to Receive Legal Advice and Counsel in Connection with the City's Rights, Duties, Privileges, and Obligations Related to the Collective Bargaining-Labor Agreement Between the City and the Duly Recognized Bargaining Agent for the City's Law Enforcement Personnel, the Brownsville Police Officers Association. Executive Session F, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code to Deliberate the Offer of Financial or Other Incentive to a Prospect in Connection with Project Hotel.
Motion to move to executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move to executive session. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Next, executive session.
At this time, we are going to move our agenda around a little bit. We will start right now with the proclamations. And the first proclamation that we do have is for Mr. Omar "El Relámpago" Juárez. If you would please come up. Welcome.
Okay, a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Omar "El Relámpago" Juárez. Whereas Omar "El Relámpago" Juárez was born and raised in Brownsville to Rodolfo and Nancy Juárez, he attended Hudson Elementary, Oliveda Middle School before graduating from Hannah Early College High School at the age of 16, after the successful completion of the College Board Advanced Placement courses. Whereas at the age of eight years old, alongside his older brother and his father's encouragement, Omar began boxing. Omar's lightning quick moves earned him the moniker "El Relámpago." Omar eventually reached an elite-level amateur status where he consistently ranked in the top 10. Omar earned several state and national championship titles, placing him at the top. Omar ended his amateur career with 120 amateur fights, seven state titles, and 30 losses. Whereas through virtue of his tenacity, Omar has been a source of inspiration to the students of the Brownsville Independent School District through his motivational speeches which encompass his six guiding principles to achieve success, including confidence, teamwork, self-worth, discipline, strategy, and a refusal to make excuses. To date, Omar has addressed over 35,000 students. Whereas in 2018, Omar began his professional boxing career and was immediately signed by premier boxing champions, the number-one boxing promotion organization in the world today. Omar is 4-0 with two knockouts. Omar is known for his signature style that combines the old-school Mexican brawling style with the flashy defense-urban American style. He fights in both the orthodox and left-handed styles and possesses a classic left hook to the body that calls to mind the great Mexican champions from the past. And whereas Omar aims to bring honor and recognition to the athletes in Brownsville, Texas by becoming the number-one boxing champion in the world, now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Omar "El Relámpago" Juárez in Brownsville, Texas, and further encourage our community to rally behind Omar as a celebration of the athletes in our community who represent Brownsville, Texas, in its best light. Done on this, the 20th day of August 2019. Congratulations, Omar.
Good afternoon, members of the Brownsville City Commission, Mayor Mendez, friends and family. First off, I would just like to thank you guys so much for this most humbling recognition. I mean, it's a dream come true. And of all the work I have done with the schools the past two years, it has been a rewarding experience, and I have learned even more why it is I love this beautiful city so much, my beautiful hometown. And I have learned about the great potential that our youth possesses and their willingness to want to learn and learn, listen to ways they can improve their lives. You know, I've been doing this motivational speaking for a while, for about two years, and it's a beautiful experience. I wouldn't trade for the world. I love doing what I do, and I love motivating the youth. And going forward, I plan to listen and learn more about ways I can continue to help people and contribute to society. Thank you.
Next proclamation that we have is for the Vermillion Restaurant. If you all would please come forward. Did you bring food?
It got cold already. Proclamation. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Vermillion Restaurant and Watering Hole. Whereas, the Vermillion Restaurant and Watering Hole is located at 115 Paredes Line Road in Brownsville, Texas, and was first established in 1934 by Fred Vermillion and his wife. In the late 1940s, Mr. Vermillion passed the restaurant's torch to G.L. Gibb Davidson. Whereas in 1971, after establishing the Vermillion as a beloved Brownsville landmark, known for delicious burgers and cold drinks, G.L. Davidson entrusted his son, Dan Davidson, to head restaurant operations. Whereas in 2016, Dan sold the restaurant to longtime manager George Bettis, who began his career at the tender age of 13 years old, washing dishes in the Vermillion's kitchen. Whereas, the Vermillion Restaurant and Watering Hole has proven to be a gem among Brownsville's small businesses by providing job opportunities, a gathering place to celebrate life's highs, and providing stability and comfort in difficult times. And whereas, on Tuesday, August 13, 2019, the Vermillion Restaurant and Watering Hole celebrated their 85th anniversary, surrounded by members of the public and its loyal and devoted staff. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Vermillion Restaurant in Brownsville, Texas, and further encourage the residents of Brownsville to support local businesses and take pride in the delicious cuisine of the rural Grand Valley region. Done this 20th day of August 2019. Thank you so much, George.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I wish to thank you for recognizing us as a small business. We don't look very big over there on Paredes Line Road, but it took us 85 years to get here, and we're very proud to serve you to this day and look forward to doing this for many years to come. Thank you very much for this honor. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we will move forward under Presentations. We have the AARP Community Challenge. If you would please come forward.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mirna Leal. I'm a planner with the Planning and Redevelopment Services Department. As you may know, the City of Brownsville was selected as a recipient of the 2019 AARP Community Challenge Grant. And here to discuss what that means for our city is Ms. Miriam Suárez, Downtown District Manager, and Ms. Veronica de la Puente from AARP.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. It is an honor to be the recipient of the 2019 AARP Community Challenge Grant. This project is a collaboration between AARP, the Planning and Redevelopment Services Department, Main Street Brownsville, and the Parks and Recreation Department. Our goal with this project is to leverage our existing assets and utilize them to establish an authentic sense of place by creating places where people want to be. 14th Street Plaza is a busy pedestrian corridor that serves as the entrance and exit to our community, and we want to provide our residents and visitors with a vibrant, inclusive, safe, and clean public space. An important component of this project includes installation of art murals, and we have partnered with the Brownsville Beautification Committee to release a call for artists. The call is open to artists from Brownsville and Matamoros, and the deadline to submit the proposals is Monday, September 16, and we invite all artists to apply. For more information, please visit the City of Brownsville website, or you may contact Mirna Leal with the Planning and Redevelopment Services Department. Again, AARP, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor Mendez and City Commissioners. My name is Veronica de la Puente, and I am the Associate State Director for Advocacy and Outreach for AARP here in Brownsville. I work here in Brownsville alongside with my volunteers. Some of them left. We had a little bit more people here, but got a little late. But I work here alongside with my volunteers who work tirelessly to prevent relevant content and programming to the citizens of Brownsville. To give you a taste of what we've done in Brownsville to get folks active, healthy, and engaging themselves in rich history and culture that makes Brownsville such a vibrant city, and we say at AARP, "To discover your real possibilities." We've held biking classes, culturally relevant presentations such as on Buffalo Soldiers, Fia de los Muertos, Tai Chi, and yoga classes. We have healthy cooking classes with the Brownsville Wellness Coalition. We just recently held a men's health forum as well. And in May, we held a hurricane preparedness forum with Cameron County. We also provide movies for grownups, where we rent a whole theater and invite our members and non-members to attend movies that are relevant to them as well. And then we also recently held a fun and fit challenge that was held at Sunrise Mall. And we also do respite-type events such as the sip-and-paint events that we've had at the Carlota Patrina Cultural Arts Center. As you can see, AARP in Brownsville is in the heart of this community. We are so excited about the City of Brownsville receiving the Community Challenge Grant that was selected from 1,700 applications. 159 grants were awarded, and nearly $1.6 million will be distributed across the country. AARP in Brownsville works to help make improvements to community residents so they can get the most out of where they live, no matter their age. Ultimately, our vision is for a future in which US communities, urban, suburban, and rural, are great communities for all. AARP's most comprehensive program to make this vision a reality is AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities. The network includes more than 218 communities, covering more than 67 million residents. Among Texas cities, Brownsville was the second city to join in 2015, right after Austin. And then San Antonio, Fort Worth, Houston, and then Dallas followed suit. So we all participate in our Network of Age-Friendly Communities. AARP Texas plays several key roles to promote livable communities, including advocating on important issues, engaging citizens, providing resources and expertise, serving as a catalyst, and also as a convener. We know that great communities take a long time to build and sustain, but we also believe that quick actions can be a spark for long-term progress. Three years ago, AARP launched the AARP Community Challenge to fund projects that demonstrate community change and help build momentum in communities to improve livability for all residents. The idea is to support projects that help communities make immediate improvements that support residents of all ages. As part of this, AARP's staff and volunteers are working across the country, engaging and mobilizing residents, delivering technical assistance and expertise to local leaders and organizations, and supporting the work of 381 communities and four states that have enrolled in the AARP Network of Age-Friendly States and Communities. That being said, I would like to congratulate your staff, Miriam Suárez, Mirna Leal, and many other city staff members who worked tirelessly to prepare this grant application on such a quick turnaround. Thank you, Mayor Mendez, Councilmembers Gawain, Tetra Khalifa, Judge Neese, I still call him Judge Neese, Holamungia, and John Catlin, and Nurith Galonsky, and City Manager Noelle Bernau. We look forward to celebrating the final implementation phase, which will be completed by November the 4th, fingers crossed. I hope we will have a grand reopening of the plaza soon after. On behalf of AARP, I would like to present you a check for $20,000 for improvements to the 14th Street Plaza area. Do I like to take a picture?
Thank you all.
We will now go back to possible action on items as discussed in executive session. First item is Action Executive B, Consideration and Appropriate Action, if any, to authorize the city attorney and retained defense counsel to initiate additional appellate proceedings before the 13th Court of Appeals as to the city's pending defensive jurisdictional plea in the litigation style number Brownsville GMS versus the City of Brownsville, Cost Number 2019-DCL-02693 in the 405th Judicial District Court in Cameron County, Texas.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As the assigned defense counsel on this case, I had reported to you some proceedings that occurred last Tuesday that resulted in some rulings. I'm here today to ask for an action item to have you authorize the city attorney and myself as retained defense counsel to file the necessary paperwork to initiate a second set of appellate proceedings before the 13th Court. This is a formality that we need to get from you, and for the reasons that were explained to you in closed session as part of the legal consultation. So we would ask for a motion and a second and a vote in favor of authorizing the city attorney and myself to pursue those proceedings.
Also move?
Second.
We have a motion to authorize a city attorney and retained defense counsel to initiate additional appellate proceedings before the 13th Court. I have a second. Do I have any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
City Secretary, please note that I am abstaining and that I did not participate in executive session. Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. Next, we have Action Executive E, Consideration and Possible Action, if any, in response to the last collective bargaining proposal by the Brownsville Police Officers Association with respect to healthcare, base salary, contract term, and related items.
Mayor and Commissioners, on this item, we're not going to need any action on this. As we had explained to you, we're still in active negotiations. We have a federal mediation scheduled already with the appropriate official and the BPOA at the end of the month. And so we don't need action from you on this tonight. We will, we know what we need to do at the mediation, so we're just going to go forward there. So this action can be removed from the agenda. We don't need action on it tonight. We don't even need a table.
So no action?
No.
Okay. There'll be no action on that item? Thank you. Next is the work session?
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. For the sake of this, we have a long agenda, and we have other dates set up in our budget calendar. Next week, we have a special meeting for a tax rate hearing. That's the 27th, so we'll postpone, if okay with the commission, the workshop for next Tuesday, and continue the discussions.
Fine. Thank you.
I started nodding when I realized what you were going to say.
Does that require tabling the item at all?
No action. It's work session.
Next work session that we have is Overview by the Texas Comptroller on Type A and B Economic Development Corporations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me here tonight to explain to you the ins and outs of operating a Type A and B economic development sales tax. And I understand you all have one called GIBIC. Is that your Type A? And then you have a Type B corporation which can do a lot of quality-of-life projects. And what we'll do is we'll go through a brief overview, and if you see me skipping over slides, it's for brevity, but I'm not going to leave out any information that will be useful to you. So, first, let's do a little bit of background. The Type A and B corporations have been around since 1989 for the Type As, and since 1991 for Type B corporations. The original purpose was to do industrial development, and that's what the primary focus of your Type A corporation is, although you can do things that are related to infrastructure, which is water and sewer projects and things like that for business development. The Type G came along when City of Arlington decided that they wanted to have a baseball stadium. And the main purpose of it was to build large facilities like that. But the purpose has been broadened over the years to allow for doing other quality-of-life projects, including parks and open space improvements, and for small communities under 20,000 to do things like incentivize retail businesses. This was all hidden, all in the Labor Code for a number of years, and legislature decided to move it over to the local government code. So for those of you in the audience that want to find where it's located, it's in Chapters 501, 505 of the Local Government Code, and you can wager your way through it in order to get some of the fine details. But I'm going to hit the high points of it tonight. Currently, there's 218 cities imposing the Type A corporation, which is about half as many as the Type Bs. Remember, Type A is focused solely on the industrial development and infrastructure-type projects. The Type Bs, you have a lot more variety of projects to do, and that's the reason why it's more popular. It's a big program in the state. About $765 million a year is collected and spent for economic development corporations, but most of these are in small communities. Brownsville is one of the few large communities that has both a Type A and a Type B corporation. They're scattered all over the state, primarily in the major metropolitan areas. It's only because cities are clustered there. The industrial developments programs are in the red on the left, and the blue is the Type B corporations who focus on the quality-of-life projects. This is all supported by sales tax. Sales tax is the engine in these corporations across the state. The rates can be at any rate from 1/8 to 1% up to the entire amount of the 2% the cities have available to them. This is a change that occurred in 2015. You used to have a maximum of a half cent for each one of these types of corporations, but it has been, the caps have been removed, so the city can make any adjustments with the voter approval to allow for other types of sales tax, including one for street maintenance, or simply can decide to put all the money into the general fund at some point. But the increments are 1/8 to 1%. That's the minimum amount. Brownsville Type A and B. You imposed the Type A corporation in 1992, and in 2002, created the B. Sales tax for each corporation is 1/4 of 1%, and the amounts raised for each corporation is just under $5 million. That's a significant amount of money in any community. And it's dedicated to the purposes I described earlier, and we'll go into some of the details. I described earlier, and we'll go into some of the details. All of this is dependent on an election to be held. The elections were held in the months prior to those dates that I just gave you, and the election order comes from the city commission. You have to give notice to the public. Public's made aware of it, and you hold these elections only in May and November. But the money doesn't come to the city right away. The Comptroller's office has administrator overhead. Businesses need to be notified for collection of the tax. So if you held a May election, notification to the comptroller would be by June. We notify all the businesses by October 1st, and they begin collecting the tax, and the city receives receipts from the sales tax when it's imposed in December. So it's a process that takes about seven months when you make a change in the taxes. So how do these corporations work? They're operated at the pleasure of the city council. The Type A corporation has five members. And what pleasure means, it's you stay on the board up to the six-year term, and you can be replaced or removed from the corporation at the pleasure of the council, which means at any time, for any reason or no reason. And people can be reappointed. And they would be reappointed to a position on the board to fill out the remaining parts of a term. You can be reappointed. So if you're doing very well, you will stay as long as you're willing to serve and the commission is willing to keep you there. And there's no requirements for membership, so you could live outside the city limits. The advantage of this is sometimes you'll have very prominent people in the community that have a major interest in economic development, and they would be able to serve on the board even though they live outside the city limits. B corporations have more limitations. Same requirements, except the seven board members rather than the five or more that an A may have. Serve at the pleasure of council, but the terms are only two years long, but you can be reappointed. But on this board, three members cannot be city officials or city employees or city council members. So in other words, four members could be if the council decided they wanted to appoint them that way, and if your bylaws of the corporation allow. You must be a resident of the city if you live in a Type B in a city the size of Brownsville. Corporation is filed at the Secretary of State's office, so this is a real corporation that operates very much like a business, but they are a nonprofit corporation, and they're tax-exempt for most purposes, including property taxes on property that they own. The boards of EDC surprisingly require no economic development training or knowledge. It's a good idea to have people with that type of knowledge, but the law only states that you must have One Hour of Open Meetings Act training and Texas Public Information Act training, but you're not required to have any knowledge of economic development to serve on one of these boards. Staff has to have the training. They're the ones that guide the EDCs through the process. The executive director would have to have the training, as well as one person from the category on the right, which is the city attorney, city administrator, or the city clerk. This training is only offered by one organization. It's offered across the state in six locations each year, and they rotate into various locations. We've had it in the Valley as late as about three years ago. We usually do a Dallas, Houston, San Antonio location, and then Abilene, Lubbock, Amarillo. Sometimes have done them in Fort Worth. But the idea is we have them around the state, so everybody has the opportunity, and they require training for these people once every 24 months to coincide with the legislative sessions where the law can be changed and updated each odd numbered year. Project approval process. This is a surprise to many. It's a pretty detailed process that the Type A corporation has to go through. Once they have approved of a project, the city council has to approve of it as well. If it's located outside the city limits, perhaps in the county or an adjacent city, the governing body of that entity would also be required to approve of the project. And if it's a Type B project, as I said, those are mainly quality-of-life-type projects, and the A was to fund any portion of it, the voters would have to approve of it. So the limitations on Type A projects is it's scaled to a small number of infrastructure-type projects and providing for industrial development. But there is an option, if you go to the voters, they can help with a project the B might be doing, maybe related with a parks project or something of that nature. Type B corporations, much more detailed list of requirements that they must go through to approve of their projects. City council approval, governing body, as I mentioned. They have to give public notice and hold a public hearing on their projects, though. And what this allows is the public gets a notice in the newspaper to give you a heads-up, there's going to be a project done by the EDC. Public hearing, which means the public gets to come and speak on it if they choose to. And if they still don't like it after the public has had an opportunity to speak, 10% of the voters in the community could petition to stop the project until an election can be held. And this only applies to Type B projects. And the election is held, and they have to be held in May or November, so sometimes there can be a significant delay in a project when an election is called, and if the voters vote no, you cannot consider this project again. If they vote yes, the project moves forward upon the date the election is campus. So what can you do with this funds? I alluded to it earlier. You can provide things for Type A, industrial-type projects, research and development, which is important in the petrochemical industry, for example, warehousing. And then you can have a business like Dell. Dell does a whole lot of things. They are a corporate headquarters facility, they're a manufacturer, telephone call center. Those are all Type A projects designated by the legislature, but they're also a retailer. So they would be a business that would qualify in a small community for an incentive for Type B. Type B corporations focus on the finer things in life, making your community a better place to live. And that would be for things like parks and open space improvements. You can do improvements to theaters. City of Frisco built a baseball stadium, and you can also do convention centers with Type B money. And you can incentivize retail. It's a misnomer that Type B corporations can incentivize retail in large cities, but you're going to be limited only to what we call targeted infrastructure, and I'll tell you what those are in just a moment. Those are things like putting in water and sewer lines for businesses, gas, electricity, water, and you can provide for utilities like internet service if you choose to. But the focus of economic development in Texas under the legislative mandates, this applies specifically to Type A corporations. You're trying to produce exports out of your community. And exports could be things that are normally, you would expect, like a factory producing things, smokestack-type industries. But in Texas, mining includes the oil and gas industry, among other things. There's also processing agricultural materials, and as I mentioned earlier, the research and development aspects. But the whole idea is to bring money into the community and exports out of the community. Now, here's the controversy. This comes up very frequently, and it's important to be mindful of, this is an economic development program. It doesn't say these things up here aren't beneficial to a community, that they aren't things that would be desirable, but it's not economic development. Because the legislature has designated school districts, for example, to receive funds directly from the state and from the taxpayers of the people through their property taxes. And the educational facilities were struck from the law in 2003. So that struck libraries, K-12 classrooms, and K-12 athletic facilities. So if the high school needs a new football stadium, although stadiums are permissible, you can't build a stadium on property owned by the school district. Municipal buildings were struck in that same change in the law, and that includes city halls, fire stations, and police stations. But the caveat is, is if it's to promote new or expanded business enterprises, you could fund a fire station or a police station. So think in terms of a fire station would be required if a fireworks factory were to locate to your community, particularly if the fireworks factory is on the opposite side of the railroad tracks from the fire department, so maybe a substation. Or a police station if you had an armored car facility was looking for location to your community. But proactively building these to anticipate something to happen would be prohibited. Sewage systems for the general public is prohibited, but you could fund sewage systems for business development. Say you want to build an industrial park. You could put water and sewer out to the industrial park. There is a provision for affordable housing for Type B corporations, and you could build the affordable housing if it is Section 8 qualified, and then you could provide the sewer and water to affordable housing, but not housing that is at market prices. And then residential city street construction or repairs prohibited, but in the business district, you could fund city street improvements. The idea is better streets in the business district or connecting the downtown to a shopping center is beneficial for business, so you could fund residential city street construction, I mean, city street construction in business areas.
May I ask you a question? It's a hypothetical. In a city like B Cave where they have the retail around the city hall and stuff, can you incentivize construction like that? Or say the developer that they do a mixed-use development? And this is all hypothetical.
Yes. What you would do is you would look at the business plan for construction, and you would be able to fund up to the portion that does not exceed the retail aspect of the business or the industrial aspect of the business. And the city hall, the fire station, the library, in your example, would be funded through some other source.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Now, let's talk about who can be the ones to manage this money. Of course, we said the process. The process is that it's a corporation board of directors, subject fully to council acceptance or refusal. So in other words, the council has the final say on every expenditure. The board of directors has final say for the board, but then they come to the council. Things can be approved by the council, can be approved by the council either in their budget, or they could be approved by the council on a project-by-project basis, but everything requires council approval. But you could fund a project, and it's managed by someone else. So in other words, the approval process has occurred, but someone else is going to be managing it. And the types of things that could happen is maybe the A is going to manage a project for the B. That's the simplest one. But maybe you're going to have a business that's going to do something. Say they were going to build a development for you. They're going to put in water and sewer in it. They're going to manage that, but the funding would come from the EDC with a council approval. So just keep in mind, it doesn't require you to manage it all the way down to the finished level. You can contract with somebody else. Now, a better explanation of it would be like chambers of commerce. They have the expertise to go talk and solicit businesses through advertising or promotion, going to trade shows and things of that nature. So you might contract with them to do advertising for you. And then remember, I mentioned that you could do projects outside the city limits. Maybe it would be in an adjacent city, and you would have a joint project. So maybe it would be better that that other city would manage the project, or more likely, you would manage it for their EDC, because it's maybe adjacent to you, and you all already have infrastructure out there or something of that nature. And then nonprofit organizations quite often will do it, like job training-type things. But just keep in mind that it doesn't require you to manage it, it just requires you to approve of it. And all your projects...
Question?
I'm sorry?
With respect to the, you can fund a project that's not in your city, does that have to be in the bylaws, or is that covered by the law?
It's covered by the law, but it could be prohibited in the bylaws.
Okay.
So always think of, the city council can do anything that's allowable in the statute. I mean, the board could do anything that's allowed in the statute, but the city council could prohibit certain types of projects. It's not uncommon for ballot language to restrict it only to, for example, build a baseball stadium. Corpus Christi has been very affirmative in that role. They've gone to, for each project, each major project, they go to a ballot item, and that's all they fund until that ballot item is paid for. So just be mindful, the law puts a ceiling, and the council then can lower that ceiling, but you can't raise it above what the statute allows.
One of the things that are for A likes to fund, or projects that are at the port and things like SpaceX, they're not necessarily in Brownsville, but they are within our jurisdiction.
So just always be thinking about, it has to have a beneficial nexus, beneficial connection to Brownsville, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in Brownsville. And finally, if the public wants to know what you're doing, the legislature has required a report to the comptroller. So all you would need to do is go to the comptroller's website. This report's supposed to be submitted to the comptroller by now April 1st of every year. It used to be February 1st, but some small cities are having problems finishing their audits on time, and so this report's submitted by April 1st, and we can exclude you from the comptroller's by any report and fine the EDC if they don't. But all we're asking for is very simple information, how to get in touch with you, how much money's in the bank, how much money you raise each year, and how much money you spend. And so the whole idea is, is this gives the legislature and the people that live in Brownsville an understanding of what's going on with your EDC. And it also, the slide number three is interesting. We say the unrestricted fund balance. This is how much money's in the bank. It also gives you an opportunity for, if businesses are looking to locate to Brownsville, they want to find out whether or not you've got enough money to be able to do what they need to do to attract them. So this is also almost an advertising campaign. So cities that spend all their EDC money every year may not get as many opportunities as those that always have a balance waiting for somebody to come along. That being said, any questions? Any other questions? My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've never been to meetings like this. I've been here 12 years. Well, eight years. Next, we have consent agenda items A through R.
Do you have any motions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we're going to move to public hearings. We have public hearing number four. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2019-1653-A, amending Chapter 38, repealing and replacing in its entirety Article 6, Section 38-156A1.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Commission. I'm here presenting this item, and this is basically the first reading of ordinance number 2019-1653, which brings Chapter 38 in compliance with state law and required in regards to the PFS. This would allow for the commission, the city manager, and myself to be responsible as per the Texas Government Code, Chapter 145, and I'm asking for the court to approve this item, and that is the way the commission to amend Chapter 38.
Okay. Do you have any motions?
I'll move to approve it.
Oh, don't we have to close public hearings?
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
Motion to close public hearings?
Second. Do we have anybody here on the side? Okay. We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any motions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number five. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2019-1090-A, amending the code of ordinances, repeating and replacing it in its entirety, Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2-26, to comply with House Bill 2840. Basically, what this is, is so that we can comply with, of course, House Bill 2840, and this is in relation to a public comment period. Basically, we are following the law. The only difference is going to be here is that this time that the citizens would be allowed to speak on an agenda item during public... this time that the citizens would be allowed to speak on an agenda item during public comment, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda.
I'll move to approve. All right, it's a public hearing, so-
It's a, yes.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
Okay, is there anybody here on this? We have a motion to close public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? All right. Do we have any motions?
I have a question, though. So how would it work, though, if you have the agenda item, then can they talk about it at that point, or only if it's a public hearing? If it's scheduled?
Well, this is for public comment.
Public comment.
We have public comment before we have items for individual consideration.
Correct.
So during public comment, whether they wish to speak on a comment on something that's not on the agenda, they can do so, and before it was that if it's on the agenda, they cannot talk about it, now they'll be able to talk about-
But if I remember the language of HB 2840, it said that people were allowed to speak about a topic either before or during the discussion of the agenda item, correct? So then-
Correct.
If it says something that's on the agenda, will they be afforded the opportunity to comment at the public comment section and during discussion, or like just one or the other?
Well, that is something that we did have discussion on, the way it, in its current form right now, the regular public hearings will always be public in regards to the item for the public speaking. Items that are not on the agenda would still be limited at five, but items that are on the agenda allows everyone who signs up by the meeting start to be able to discuss the item, except that the law says that it could be done either during the item or before the item. So they're gonna, everyone that wishes to speak on the topic will be allowed to speak before the item. And this is just so it's more orderly and before the commission.
Right, in other words, there'd be like a public comment period for any agenda item, but it would be at one time, rather than every single item have become a public discussion, right?
Correct.
And that's what the law allows, it allows you to speak before or during-
Or during, correct.
By doing it before, it streamlines it a lot better, makes it a lot-
And so on every agenda, it lists the rules of our public comment that you have to sign up before, et cetera, and so now the rules will be changed, and that's all we're editing. Okay, thank you.
Just to note, there may be a couple of changes. One is that the procedure that applies to register for public comment, you're absolutely correct, that will change, because now the public will have the right to speak on the agenda item, or on an item not on the agenda at all. The other consideration is that it may change the sequence of the items on the agenda. Because the public now preserves the right to speak before the agenda item, public comments likely will be moved to the front of the agenda.
So I'm just wondering, though, do you get a double shot at it?
No, Commissioner.
If it's a public hearing?
Yeah, if it's a public hearing, everything will be discussed at that time, because that is like what we just had, where the mayor will ask people in the room if there's anyone who wishes to speak on that topic. So that would be handled the same way we've always done that.
So if it's, somebody wants to speak to an agenda item, they would do it during the public comment section?
Correct.
Not during the individual item?
Correct. It's not, every hearing could possibly be a public-
May I hear a question?
Okay, we had already closed public hearing, we were on the motions.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2019-235.91, to amend the existing boundaries within the 031 non-residential overlay district and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. This is a city-initiated case to amend the current boundaries of the non-residential overlay, more specifically for the area that's by Boca Chica Boulevard, Old Port Isabel Road, Robin Hood Street, and Kings Highway. It is approximately 109 acres. There are current, there is currently a variety of zonings and different uses. So the non-residential overlay prohibits dwelling units, group quarters, recreational vehicle parks, medical, inpatient facilities, schools, churches, daycares, and so forth. So by removing this overlay, the uses above would be permitted. Also, any uses that are currently in this overlay that are in legally non-conforming status would be in compliance with the removal. Additionally, for example, homeowners who have the residences in this overlay would be able to construct, for example, additions to their homes. So this is the proposed area where the overlay is going to be removed. This is an overall map of the city, of the different areas where there's the non-residential Currently, in this area, there's a single-family dwelling, there's commercial businesses and civic institutions, and as you can see, there's a variety of zonings in all directions. There's dwelling, apartment, like retail, general retail, and even industrial. This is the 200-foot radius map, and there were 120 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and MP&amp;Z supported this proposed amendment to amend the current boundaries of the 031 non-residential overlay.
Okay.
Public comment?
Okay. A motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing, second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2019-235.92, amending the code of ordinance as chapter 348, article eight, specific use permits by adding a new section, section 348-1426, titled Rehearing of Expired Applications and Dealing with Related Matters.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. This is a brief amendment to the zoning ordinance that allows applicants with the opportunity to petition the reinstatement of a specific use permit. And just to provide you with some background, generally, when certain uses are not allowed by right in a used district, or whenever a rezoning is not feasible in an area, these certain uses can be permitted through the issuance of a specific use permit. And the specific use is approved within a site plan, and it doesn't change the base zoning like in a regular rezoning of a property. Specific use permits are subject to term limits, and they expire typically after one year of issuance if the applicant doesn't make use of it. With this amendment, we hope to embed more flexibility by allowing applicants to petition the reinstatement of, you know, of a specific use permit without having to reapply and go through the entire process all over again. And this process typically takes between two and four months. The petition will be made directly to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and if granted, the reinstatement becomes immediate. This amendment also provides a new option for applicants who experience unforeseen circumstances. In terms of the process for submitting a petition as proposed by this ordinance in particular, the petition must be submitted in writing to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm sorry, to the Planning and Redevelopment Services Department. It is then placed on the earliest Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where an applicant can make his case to justify the reinstatement of the expired specific use program. If a petition is denied by Planning and Zoning, the applicant may appeal to City Commission, as is the case for all zoning appeals. The specific use permit will be subject to the term limits established by ordinance. Staff recommends, or, you know, Planning and Zoning recommends or supports the proposed amendment to the specific use ordinance, and we received no opposition at the last hearing. And so, again, this is a public hearing.
Does anybody here on this side?
Motion to close public hearing?
We have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Any motions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-079-S-M8, to grant major amendment allowing apartments in apartment A use and general retail G, 4CG, for lot three, Las Palmas Condominiums located at 2835 East Price Road.
So, once again, good evening. So this case was previously approved back in late 2017, early 2018, approximately. It was approved for a specific use permit to allow retail plaza in the front portion of the property and some apartment units in the rear. In this case, the applicant is looking to get a major amendment. The city approached the property owner to donate 50 feet for right-of-way, and a street was created to alleviate congestion in the intersection of Price and Old Port Isabel Road. So there, due to that donation for the right-of-way, an amendment was triggered, and therefore they're looking to reduce the amount of units for the apartment units in the rear, and they are needing more parking spaces for their retail plaza. So this is an aerial view of the property. There's undeveloped land to the south, to the west, there's also apartments, there's civic institutions, there's commercial businesses and apartments to the north and the east. This is the zoning map. The zoning designation that predominates is apartment. This is a 200-foot radius map, there were 10 mailouts and zero written opposition. This was the original approved site plan. So as you can see in the rear, there were the three apartment units, and now they have reduced it down to one and are proposing the additional parking lot in the rear. So this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and MP&amp;Z supported the applicant's request.
Motion to close public hearing?
Is there anybody here on this side? Okay. We have a motion to close public hearing, and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-035, to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G for lot seven, block 17, Ebony Heights subdivision, a subdivision located at 1464 Yale Avenue.
Good evening, Don Warwick, with Planning and Redevelopment Services. This case was carried forward from the last city commission meeting. The request is as stated to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G. The purpose for this request, the applicant initiated the construction of a carport prior to obtaining necessary permits, and I'll give you a little bit of background. This is the neighborhood, it's a single-family neighborhood, that's the surrounding land uses. This is the zoning within the neighborhood and the surrounding properties that were notified for this case. This is the, an image of the carport that was constructed. In order for a carport to be approved in this location, in the front of the structure, the area district of G is necessary. That district designation allows for carports to encroach the front setback, which means that it can be fully within the front setback of the property. There are side setbacks that are imposed as for any structure, and this particular structure does have an encroachment on the side setback as well, that will need to be addressed either through a modification of the building, addition, or variance through the board of adjustment. Those are the only two options that they have in order to address the encroachment on the side. They are requesting the G designation in order to allow the carport to extend into the front setback, and the designation, these are the setback requirements within the two zoning districts. The caveat is that in G, there's a specific exemption for a carport that can extend into the front setback. The side setbacks are a little bit reduced, it's a three-and-a-half-foot side setback instead of a five-and-a-half-foot side setback for the structure in the requested area district. Right now, the carport does encroach about a foot and one inch into the side setback. It's approximately four feet, three inches from the front property line. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It was recommended by staff as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. When we had this item before the city commission two weeks ago, it was tabled, there were concerns voiced by neighborhood residents with regard to the construction. I think some of those concerns were with regard to the fact that it was constructed prior to obtaining necessary permits. There was also concern with regard just to the appearance of the structure. And I did go and tour the site. There are other properties within the neighborhood that have similar carports, and carports that are positioned as close to the street as this one is. It's not every house, it's probably, every two to three houses have carports, and they're not, they're not all uniform, but some of them are very similar to what you see in these images. So that is the, that is the request, is to rezone to an area district G, and as I mentioned, it was supported by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is public hearing, I'm not sure that there-
Based, I'm sorry, based on the cover page, it states that the applicant has agreed to modify the existing structure to comply with the proposed district setbacks, so that's going to happen?
The lateral setback will have to be addressed, yes, the side setback.
What about the front?
There is no front setback required for a carport in this area district, so there would not need to be any adjustment to the structure on the front.
Okay. Is anybody here on this side? No? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing?
We have a motion to close public hearing, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Okay. Do we have any motions?
I'm voting aye on that.
We haven't taken it up yet.
That's the public hearing.
Oh, that was the one, I'm sorry.
We have, do you have any motions on the actual item?
Well, can you just remind me, the last time we had a couple come, and can you refresh my memory about what their concern was?
Sure. The concern, as I recall, and what we noted, was they were upset because this property owner built the carport prior to obtaining permits. They also voiced concern about the amount, the distance that the carport protrudes into the front property.
But you're saying that there's no requirements now, that it must be set, or-
If the zoning is changed to the requested designation, then they don't have a front setback requirement for the carport.
If it's approved.
Right, so this-
If it's approved, that's really, they're trying to resolve a violation.
Right. The new zoning would actually allow, they'd come into compliance with a new zoning, with the exception of the side setback, which they would have to fix, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so what's the enforcement for that? How do we come back for that?
Well, that's not, that's not an action that comes before the city commission, that's an action that comes before the board of adjustment. They have the authority to relax the required setbacks within the zoning designation. So they will have, the applicant has a choice, they can pursue a variance to address the one-foot, one-inch encroachment that they have on that side setback, or they could modify the structure.
So as I understand it, as we speak now, they're in violation on the front and the side?
Correct.
And this new designation, if approved, would get them into compliance on the front and not on the side?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
And you said that there were other houses with similar structures?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any motions on this side?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
I'm a aye as well.
Me too.
That's three. So motion still carries. Thank you.
Can I ask one additional question? The houses that do have similar carports, are they zoned appropriately?
I, we did not do that research to verify for certain that they came and obtained the necessary zoning, so I-
Just curious. But either way, the board of adjustments is going to tell them that they need to be in compliance, right?
The board of adjustment will make a decision with regard to the case that's put in front of them. They can grant a variance to the side setback, or they can deny it. If they deny that variance, the applicant's due process would be to district court, so they, they've got to go through that process. The other option for the applicant is to modify the structure and to push it closer into the property by that encroachment by a little over a foot.
If you could let the board of adjustment know that it was a split vote and that there were commissioners that had concerns.
We can convey that to the board if this is a case that they pursue.
But, or at least, I understood your question to be more like, are they going to go out and see who's in violation, because they may have already, or was that kind of related?
The one we just approved, because it's still approved, but they're still not compliant.
Right, just on the side.
Well, no, 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 because what you said, right-
Because what you said, right, there's some houses, but we don't know that those houses didn't build them without getting the proper permit, or-
It would take a neighbor complaint on each home to go and check.
We would, we would address those on a complaint basis typically.
Yeah, because the city can't go and enforce something without a complaint in their hand.
Well, we can, but we generally don't have the resources to do that.
Oh.
But we're encouraging them to break the law and be able to come in later and fix it that way, by passing this.
Commissioner, if I can add, if, if, if we would like to have front setback requirements as part of G, zone G, I would recommend us having some sort of front setback requirements as part of our code rewrite. We can look at that. Because I, I would just have concerns of having, building right on your property line, for example. You know, and so, and so that, that's something if the commission would like, we can look as part of the code rewrite, to, to look at front yard setbacks in all zones.
And as a commission- We do have them, we do have a front setback requirement. There's an exemption specifically for carports. So the, the code update can absolutely address the carport exemption. I think it's something that's been discussed many times and it's somewhat confusing, and there's clearly a better way to address those, those carports.
Let's add it.
So we will make sure that that's incorporated into our study for a code update.
Okay.
But I'm more concerned to what Commissioner Neese was saying, that I think we're not, we're allowing people to go and build whatever they want, and then if someone makes a complaint, then they'll go back and fix it. Like, we're encouraging people to not go through the proper procedures.
It's an enforcement issue, though. Not everybody catches it unless somebody kind of tells them sometime, and that happens a lot. When I was on Heritage, it would happen a lot, so. It's almost like whether, it's either reported by the neighborhood or somebody just happens to catch it. It happens quite a bit, unfortunately, but it's an enforcement issue.
So can, can we call a row call on that vote?
Sure.
Yes.
The ayes? And the nays? Thanks.
Next, we have public hearing number ten, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero thirty-six dash C O to rezone from dwelling A to apartment H for lot one Jenkins subdivision located at thirteen oh five Bernard Road with a conditional overlay.
Yes. This request is to rezone parcel that is currently dwelling A to allow for apartments. The property contains just under a quarter of an acre, and property fronts Barnard Road at Boca Chica. These are the surrounding uses, apartments, single-family dwellings, and some undeveloped land to the west. This is what the surrounding zoning looks like. As you can see to the east, immediately there are apartments, and further to the east, there is, I believe, another church or school. Oh, excuse me, an apartment complex. Okay. We did receive protest from neighbors with regard to the zoning request, and that's indicated in this map.
They organized.
The blue, the blue is opposition?
The property owners opposed is the blue, yes. What's the difference?
So it needs a super majority?
It does require that, and I think that's on our next, one of our next slides indicates that due to the protest that's been submitted, it does require a super majority in order to approve the action. So this item was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did, at that point in time, the commission voted to support the application with conditional overlays, so subject to the following conditions. Five-foot vegetative screen, a privacy fence, both of those along the north and west property lines, no access to Boca Chica on the south side of the property, and that the parking should be located on the north side of the, of proposed apartments. Within this zoning designation with the size of the parcel that is the subject, they could provide a maximum of five units. The property itself has the right, under its current designation, to develop a single-family home or a duplex because of the size of the parcel. The development standards that are applicable require all of these things. They require two parking spaces per unit. They require a minimum of ten percent of the property be landscaped. It requires a twenty-four-foot parking turnaround, and of course, the structures must meet the setback requirements on the property. Staff is fairly confident that this is, these restrictions, as well as the conditional, conditional overlay, would not provide enough buildable area for the part, for the developer to build five units. Probably more realistically, you're looking at two, no, excuse me, three or four units on, on the property. But there is concern from the neighborhood, as, as you've seen in the protest information, with regard to the size of the property and what it can actually withstand capacity-wise, an increase in traffic and intensity of use, and then of course, maintaining the single-family characteristic of the neighborhood. We're all voiced in conversations, whoa, with the planning commission. I'm sorry about that. Totally lost my place here.
This is item ten.
So.
I think there are quite a bit of people here on this case. You might want to enforce a time limit because of, out of respect to the audience. It's almost ten.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody here on the side?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up. Just, if you would, please just tell us your name when you come up. And if you can make it brief, that'd be nice, but.
Thirty-second courtesy.
Hello, commissioners and mayor. My name's Don Tiavolos. I'm a resident at Jenkins subdivision. I'm here to oppose the building of the apartments on Jenkins. We've obtained about nineteen signatures, and two of them are notarized. Copies of the lever were divested on Tuesday to the city of Bronsville, and all the signatures were like around two, two hundred feet of the opposed building, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and mayor. My name is Tori Avolos, and I'm a resident of the Jenkins subdivision. I'm here to represent the rest of the neighbors. We do have a concern of building the apartments. We feel that it's not conducive, first of all, the spacing issue, what type of residence would this be? I do want to make it very clear that we're not in opposition to building, for example, like a duplex or a single home. We are fine for that, but not for the apartments. So we ask your consideration to oppose this building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close-
I have a question. Did, did the Planning and Zoning Commission or any, or the city consider the fact that there's two schools, that cars come through there to Boca Chica from the church, St. Mary's School, and Stell, and, and the outlet to Boca Chica from there, and you're going to have one outlet from the apartments right there at the light, basically? Did they-
We do take into consideration the context and the surrounding land uses, yes.
And they didn't think it would be, cause some crowding there for the, the light?
The recommendation was still for approval.
Motion to close public hearing?
Well, may I ask another question? Will there, would the outlet only be on Bernard, or will there also be an exit on Boca Chica?
Only on Bernard.
The conditions that are proposed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission restrict access to Boca Chica, so they would not access Boca Chica.
Yeah, I saw that. It was only on-
Only on the internal street.
Right by the light.
One more person that would like to speak?
Uh, Bernard.
Okay. Do you need to speak on it at all? Come on up.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. My name is Dany Martinez, and like I mentioned, I am, my wife and I are the owners of the area. This is our first investment. We are aware of the requirements, regulations of the city to, you know, maintain the, you know, the parking spaces, the greenery, and we do understand that, you know, that those are concerns, and we have already followed those rules. We do have preliminary drawings of the, of the apartments, and it all follows those rules and regulations. We are excited to build, and, you know, we look forward to, to building, so.
So how many units will you be building?
At the moment, we have a proposal for five units. Again, we understand that each unit does require two parking spaces, and, you know, we do have, you know, that available.
Have you spoken to any of your neighbors on this, or?
No, but we are, we, we understand their concerns. We are willing to, you know, listen to their concerns and make peace, and do our best to, you know, understand that, you know, they're concerned, so, you know, yeah, we can definitely speak to them.
So you said it's an investment property, you won't be living there, right?
Correct.
Are you willing to consider fewer units?
Consideration, yes, ma'am. Something to consider.
And just to confirm that this is market rate, this is, this will be a market rate development and not a low-income housing development?
No, no, we want to build something nice in the community.
It could be, it could still be nice and be low-income housing, but if-
Yes, sir. No, you're right. No, the idea is to bring, you know, to improve the living conditions for, you know, for the community.
Okay. Thank you.
We want quality tenants.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is ten percent for the landscaping, it wasn't for you, it was for them?
Thank you.
Is that standard? It seems rather thin, especially for five units.
It is standard, and it is pretty small.
I think you should look at that also when you redo the code.
Got it.
Okay. I think we had a motion to close public hearing from Commissioner Tetra. Do I have a second?
Second.
Those, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? All right. Do we have any motions on this?
Motion to deny?
Second.
We have a motion to deny and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me.
Okay. So you're in favor of construction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Apartment.
A motion then is to deny, and it passes. Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number eleven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero thirty-seven to rezone from dwelling H to dwelling G for lot eleven, block two, Viever, the subdivision located at four fourteen Sherry Avenue.
So the current zoning for this property is dwelling H. The, the property owner is looking to rezone to dwelling G due to reduced setbacks. They, so this case is very similar to the carport situation on Yale Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the property. There is single-family dwelling in every direction, and the predominant zoning designation is also dwelling. This is a two-hundred-foot radius map. There were two hundred, two hundred mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. PNZ did support the petition of the property owner. So like I said, the, this case is very similar. The applicant basically began the construction of a structure on the front part of the property without a permit. It was actually destined to be living space to the existing home. They were cited. They went to our department, and they applied for a building permit to put the property into compliance. They did request a variance, but that variance was denied. They were requesting a variance to encroach on the front property setback. Since it was denied, they opted for the option of rezoning the property to dwelling G in order to allow what has be, already undergone construction, they want to turn that into a carport. So I, in a sense, so, so it won't be a total loss. They're going to turn the existing structure that commenced construction, they'll turn it into a carport, and that's why they're rezoning this property to, to dwelling G.
So if I understand it, they were originally, they started without a permit?
Yes.
And they were going to construct living space, but once there was some sort of enforcement issue, then they decided to just go ahead and, and go with a carport?
Right. And even more so because of the denial of the variance to encroach on the front setback.
Okay. Do we have anybody here on the side?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Any motions?
I'll move to approve the rezoning from dwelling H to dwelling G because there hasn't been any opposition compared to-
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
We have public hearing number twelve, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero thirty-eight dash C O to rezone from light retail F to light retail H for lot forty-seven, block three, Forest, Forest North subdivision, section seven, located at fifty-five eleven Achievement Avenue with a conditional overlay.
So this property has one point six acres. The applicant is looking to rezone from light retail F to light retail H. They're basically trying to change the area district to allow a higher intensity of, for apartment units. They are wanting to do a multifamily development. Here's the aerial of the property. There is single-family dwelling in every direction and undeveloped land to the east and the west. The predominant zoning designation is dwelling. This is a two-hundred-foot radius map. There were two, thirty-one mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and PNZ did support this, the applicant's request with the conditional overlay to cap the intensity at twenty-four dwelling units. They are also requesting a five-foot vegetation buffer along the south property line, and also a privacy fence along said, said property line.
Okay. Is anybody here on the side? Is there, come on up? While that's happening, Helen, the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, what is, what is that? Which one are we going off of?
So the comprehensive plan is, is our long-range document?
When was that done?
That was done in two thousand and seven, I believe.
That's the, that's the Imagine Bronsville plan from two thousand and nine.
Okay. We're going to, that's what we're working on now?
We're not going through a formal comprehensive plan update, but we are going to tweak elements of the plan through the process we've established, yes.
And the land use plan, that's the one that we're doing, is it?
Land use subdivision zoning on the land development side and all the codes on the other side.
Okay. Thanks. Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name is Gene Getzel, and I live two blocks from where they're planning to build this apartments. I moved, we moved into that area about six years ago, and it was a nice, quiet place. Within the last two or three years, nine houses have been built around us, and it's still a real nice and quiet place. When we first moved out there, we were told that no two-story buildings would be built in the area. So I don't know what these apartments are going to be like. The area is nice, and I think these apartments would degrade our houses. They're all single dwelling houses, and, you know, having an apartment two blocks from where we live is just not feasible, not for us, or our neighbors.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Okay. Any motions?
I did the last one, I said first.
Anybody, do you have any motions to approve, or?
I have a question. How many apartment complexes?
Twenty-four.
Units? Twenty-four, exactly?
They're capping at a twenty-four units, and this was a proposition made by, by the developer. With the new area district, they can put up to thirty-seven.
It'll go to, go to thirty-seven?
With the new area district, yes. But they themselves volunteered and said-
With overlay.
They'll cap it at twenty-four.
And are they two-story?
From what they said, it's, it was just going to be a one-story development, but they have not submitted any, any preliminary plans.
So we could- We, we cannot guarantee that it will not be two-story.
Right. Right.
Or even three. What's the maximum height of it?
In age, it's only two stories.
Okay, so it can be two, we cannot guarantee that it will only be one story.
They weren't, that wasn't part of the overlay, right, or whatever the?
The conditional overlay, no.
You can condition it to be one-story if you want, but usually homes can be two-stories.
Well, but do we know what the restrictions are, the housing, the, are there?
The restriction on area district age is two-story.
Okay.
So, that would be the maximum that they, that they would be allowed.
So, even like where this gentleman lives, he could have built a two-story house?
Depending on what area district he has, which in that area that predominates is G, it also allows a story.
Okay.
Any motions?
To deny.
Motion to deny, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to deny and a second, any discussion? Those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I would be opposed as well.
So, we have three?
I'm opposed. Who's in nays?
Nay? Oh, wait.
Like, this is a deny.
A motion to deny.
Motion to deny, I deny.
Okay, so who's in favor of denying, of denying this request?
Four.
Okay, four. Okay, those opposed to denial? Me. So, four, three.
I've had a hard night. I was cold when I got here, now I'm sleepy. I'm not really sure what's happening.
Next, we have a public hearing number thirteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero thirty-nine to rezone from general retail F to general retail H for lot one and the east one half of lot two, block one ninety-one, original townsite located at eight fifty East Tyler Street.
So, this property is point twenty acres. The proposed use is professional office. It is fronting East Tyler Street and the property owner is just looking to rezone the area district to maximize the, the buildable area. So, this is the aerial of the property. There are multiple uses surrounding it, there's single-family dwelling, commercial businesses, law offices, city constitutions, even repair services to the east. The predominant zoning is general retail. This is a two-hundred-foot radius map. There were sixty-one mailouts and zero written opposition. PNZ does support this rezone from general retail F to general retail H and is consistent with the future land use plan.
Did they say what they're going to build there?
Law office.
About the only option there, I think.
Yeah.
Is anybody here on the side? Do I have a motion in closed public hearing?
No.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any motions?
I'll move to approve.
Yep, motion and a second to approve, any discussion?
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Motion carries, thank you.
I think we're all lost at this point, right? Next, we have the public comment period and Mr. Eugene Fernandez, would please come forward?
Tell me you watered the trees. You watered the trees.
Yes, I'm very much more of a happy chapie this, this time. Those that know me know that I'm passionate about our history. Most definitely, I get up into accelerated condition, you might say, when I see vanishing history and we saw a portion of it last time on my comment. Commissioner Gowen had provided a packet for you for last, and you didn't receive that. Okay, and then all of you have the packet for this session too. Okay, there have been some heroes in this situation and two of them are in this room, I'm glad to report. You've got Commissioner Golansky and Commissioner Gowen. Step forward, step to the forefront and action was taken. I've been working for the last two weeks with P U B, Rabbi Kishner and with the property owners and it, by the notice that we did have a problem, a crisis of nine trees and Mayor was conscientious enough in order to ask me to reiterate that and I said nine trees, sad to report that upon further investigation, there are twelve trees, you know, out of the, out of the whole mixture that are, but there's a solution and it appears that Public Utilities, in particular P U B, is, is actually accelerating the, the program in order to get water back into that, to treat the soil and, and get water back into that Resaca Way. So, that is, is so much better than where we were last two weeks ago. There are, Rabbi Kishner is going to go out there and, at the end of this week, under the contract from P U B in order to do the subsoil borings and do porosity tests and all of that. So, you can see that it's, it's in motion as to speak. A, a request was made for a water truck or tanker truck to, or it was, the conversation was generated in order to investigate into possibility of doing that. I haven't seen any real action on that. I would definitely suggest that that be done because on my, again, the report that you have there on the census of the trees, you're going to see those that are dead and those that are living are supposedly in good condition and then three of them in poor condition. Does that mean that they're under life support? So, the longer that we go in to this program without the, just the, a token of the water being applied to the trees, the more we're in fear of losing those three that I can see right away. Beyond the, the two that we have here in this room, this chamber that have stepped forward, we have the, a, a, a public rush to support this and just off the top of my head, there's three or four hundred people that have come forward and expressed an interest in this and this is part of the networking that's going to be needed with the project and I'm so, so happy to see that. There is a public rally that is scheduled for, for next Sunday and City Manager's Office was kind enough in order to, to get into that particular situation and we have an approval on that, does not conflict with any restrictions that were applied to mass meetings or whatever. I would invite you all to come to, those that can, to come out to the tour, the historical tour that's going to take place next Sunday. It's going to be very comprehensive, there's a lot of material there and it'll give you a chance to see what that project is all about, the depth of that. So, so there we have it. We have a, a, a progress in that and with all of the team players that are on board in this, we hopefully will, will have the saving of those other three trees that are in jeopardy right now.
Thank you.
And I thank you so very much for your attention towards this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Stephanie Dominguez, if you would please come up.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Dominguez and I live here in Brownsville. I attend as many city and county commissions' meetings as my schedule allows because I want to be as informed as possible regarding my community. Additionally, I believe it is an important part of civic engagement process. However, I understand it is a privilege to be able to attend as not everybody has the ability to do so. When I attend these meetings, I prepare myself and I show respect to the commission, to this political process and to my fellow constituents by being engaged and quiet. I've come before you this evening because I want to address the respect and dedication each of your constituents show through their commitment to attend these meetings. People of Brownsville take time out of their day to come here because for one reason or another, they care. I look around and there's at least two or three of us that have been here for four hours. I appreciate the commitment the commission has made to attend as many meetings as possible and that includes meetings outside of this because I understand you attend meetings, you know, with organizations and community leaders. I have met with some of you at times to discuss work-related issues and other times just issues related to helping make the dream of a better Brownsville a reality. I sincerely appreciate the time each of you has given. Unfortunately, some of you have shown profound disrespect for the position you hold and the people of Brownsville. This summer, I had two confirmed meetings with one of you, for both of these meetings the commissioner did not show. Not only that, I neither received prior, prior warning nor did I receive a reason or apology after. For one meeting, I took time out of my weekend because that is what worked for the commissioner. I scheduled the second meeting even after the show with blatant disrespect because I plan to discuss something more important than my ego. After speaking with members of the community, I found out that I am not the only person this has happened to. I have a job that I value and love, among many other benefits, my colleagues allow me to flex time to work on weekends and evenings. The weeks that I was scheduled to meet with one of you, my timesheet was incomplete by one hour. I was able to add time by working late. That is not an opportunity that everybody has. People lose wages when their hours aren't met. That is not fair or right and is through no fault of their own. I appreciate your busy schedules. I know you cannot take every meeting a constituent requests. I understand you may miss meetings that you want to attend and I respect that. I respect your time. There are many Brownsville residents who are working with organizations, grassroots groups and community leaders. We request time with you to discuss important issues and we are representing more than just ourselves. We can be representing up to a hundred people and some people I know represent thousands. So, to close, I ask all of you to attend as many legitimate meetings as possible, but more than that, I ask you to show mutual decency and respect to your constituents by following through with your commitments. Attend the meetings that you confirm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, at this time, I do have one last public comment from Mr. Jesus Mendoza. He is with, within ADA compliance, so I do have him on the phone.
Okay.
So, I'm going to put him on speaker.
Sure.
Mr. Mendoza? Okay. I have you on the speaker.
Oh, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jesus Mendoza. My phone number is nine five six five eight three seven twelve. The following is a event police officer suicide. I have been homebound for more than seven years with light threatening electro-sensitivity. Exposure to the same wireless microwave radiation which police officers have worked on me among other things, swelling of biological organs and symptoms, often attacked in a struggle. I'm in pain all the time, this is a horrible way to die. My electro-sensitivity has been recognized by federal and jurisdictions and by court as a physical medical condition and as a disability and proves conclusively that wireless radiation causes harm even to adults. The same microwave radiation which police officers have worked has caused electro-sensitivity and others severe harm to children, teachers, doctors, attorneys, scientists, firefighters, police officers, a judge and even to a director of a world health organization. The following are excerpts of a document submitted to officials of the New York Police Department and to the Dean of the U T R G V S School of Medicine cited medical, legal and scientific evidence proving that the microwave radiation at work is causing severe harm to police officers including suicide. A copy of this document is also submitted to the mayor and, and Commissioners, so this information can be shared with police officers. Exposure to radiation above the federal safety limit causes harm even to strong adults and, and the cell phones, computers and other wireless devices used by police officers emit microwave radiation above the federal safety limit. Police officers have been exposed to more than two hundred and thirty thousand units of microwave radiation and exposure to less than a hundred and fifty thousand can cause electro-sensitivity and brain, eye, blood, nerve, heart and DNA damage even to the children of police officers. Exposure to less than ten thousand units breaks the blood-brain barrier to allow toxins in the bloodstream including painkillers to enter and damage the brain which in turn can cause anxiety, depression and dizziness and impairment of the officer's judgment and emergencies. Out of five, out of fifty-five police officers that routinely use wireless devices on their laps, fifty-three suffer respiratory cancer. Chronic exposure to wireless radiation increases by more than a hundred and fifty percent the risk of suicide. Despite that the harm caused by wireless radiation is reaching epidemic proportions, most doctors are in the dark when denial and continuing technology is medicating and mistreating the harm being caused by microwave radiation. To make things worse, officers with suicidal tendencies keep it to themselves or tear or losing their gun, their job and even their, their life. The measures that can be taken to prevent suicide includes the use of same mitigating technologies used by the security service and by the water patrol, measuring officers exposed to radiation, training officers to avoid unnecessary exposures to radiation at home and at work and periodic medical examinations by doctors with expertise in electro-sensitivity. Your prompt response to this matter can save lives of police officers. Our emergency responders cannot defend themselves from these aggressions. Should you need more information, please give a call to nine five six five eight three seven eight twelve. Thank you very much for being anxious and for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Who is he?
Jesus Mendoza, is that correct?
Yes.
Who is he with?
Well, he's, he's just a, a mission citizen.
Oh, for mission, he's for mission.
But we allow public comments by phone?
Yeah, if I may, Commissioner, because of the type of ADA disability that he has, we looked at the federal guidelines for, for that disability to see which ways they could participate in this public forum. Teleconference was the one he chose, the other one was email and the other one was by letter. We looked that, to that specific disability and this was the specific method by which he could participate in tonight's hearing, so I thank the City Secretary's Office by making this happen.
I, I would just ask that we get, I think he was reading off of something, so if it's possible, I heard maybe about seventy percent of what he was saying, so if it's possible to get a copy of that statement to our emails, that'd be great.
He did mention to me that he would be submitting a letter so I can make copies for all of you.
Okay, thank you.
So, as soon as I get that all.
I think it's very encouraging that our community members are still able to communicate with us via these methods.
Where was he from?
Mission.
Mission, Texas?
Yes.
But he was talking about our police department?
I think police department in general.
He was talking about microwave radiations and its effect on brain, brain damage and how, I think he said the border patrol has a method or some sort of way to measure that radiation, so he was asking us to consider it. That's what I got, but, could be wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number fifteen, consideration and action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero seventy-three to appoint members to the Ethics Commission.
Okay, I believe the two members that were pending was Commissioner Tetra and Commissioner Gowen.
I would make a motion to appoint Daisy Zamora.
A motion to appoint Daisy Zamora?
I'll second.
No, a second? Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Was opposed? Okay.
And I'm going to ask the table mind because I haven't had time to think about it.
I'm going to ask that if, if she doesn't make it at the next meeting, that the commission be allowed to make that appointment because it's delaying the activation of this commission, which I think is very important.
I'll have somebody by next week. I don't think we have to get that into it.
Okay. Can you have somebody by the next week?
Sure.
Okay.
Do we have a second for the table team?
I'll, I'll second it. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, was opposed?
Next, we have action item number sixteen, consideration and action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero seven to, to appoint members to the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation.
Okay, I think.
Good evening, Commissioners. There are two vacancies presently. I defer to this comprehensive list that is provided electronically. This is the most comprehensive, up-to-date list of those applications we've received to date.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Jason Wolf.
A second?
A motion and a second to appoint Jason Wolf. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? Okay.
Make a motion.
You know, that, that spot belongs to me. I don't have, I don't have anybody on J-BIC and we opened it up to seven members, but I can't see right now and my iPad died.
I don't have anyone either, though.
You just, that was District Two.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Maria Peña, if I can get a second.
We have a motion to appoint, who, who's that Commissioner?
Maria Peña.
Maria Peña. Do I have a second on that? Any second? Nope? Okay. Motion to appoint Maria Peña fails. Any other motions?
I'll make a motion to appoint, I can't see, Sandra Duran?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to appoint Sandra Duran and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Next, we have action item number seventeen, consideration and action to adopt resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero sixty-seven, finding that AEP Texas Inc.'s requested increase to its electric transmission and distribution rates and charges within the city should be denied, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public and required by law require reimbursement of city's rate case expenses, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Melissa Lee Sarri, Management Analyst for the Office of the City Manager and with me is?
Elizabeth Walker with the Office of the City Manager.
And today we are here to present the recommendation and continue a step for the AEP rate case structure. So, just to provide you with a little bit of background, on May first, twenty nineteen, AEP Texas made its annual filing with the Public Utility Commission of Texas, also known as the PUCT, to change the rates for its distribution and transmission lines. So, on June fourth, presented before commission and this body, the City of Brownsville suspended AEP's application for rate increase, therefore giving us ninety days to go ahead and proceed for our next step, which we are here now. So, the recommendation is, following the settlement discussions and hearing with the Public Utility Commission, the PUCT, our attorneys and consultants recommend in good faith the denial of the company's rate request at this, at our city level. With that being said, the purpose of this With that being said, the purpose of this resolution is to deny the company's rate increase, therefore be ordained as a reasonable and excessive as analysis by our attorneys and consultants indicate that they are.
So the next steps would then be to approve this resolution, which indicates that we deny the rates. So approve the denial resolution. This then will be submitted to A E P as well as to our consultants, which will then trigger, of course, the next step, which will be the hearing with the Public Utility Commission of Texas. They will then determine the rates, set the rates. That will then affect those subscribers within our original jurisdiction.
Move to approve.
To approve, to deny?
We have, well, we're looking for a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen zero six seven. So I have a motion from Commissioner Mungia. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to remove action item number eighteen, being that this is part of the budget work session. So this will be presented at the next city commission meeting.
No action needed?
No. Next, we have action item number nineteen, consideration and action to acknowledge the financial statements and cash investment report for the City of Brownsville for the third quarter ended on June the thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Good evening, our old mayor. I'll be brief on this item due to time constraints. You were given packets of the financials on your, on your book. The only item on here that I do need to correct is the presentation that, that's currently they have right now is the most updated. The one that was in your packet, pages thirty-five to forty, were, were not updated. So briefly, just to give us some highlights, tax levies are about in par of last year. Sales taxes are above budget projections by seven hundred and sixteen thousand. Unemployment, unemployment rate is down from last year. Veterans Bridge, it's, we're about five, five percent over budget projections. Utilities are, are one percent lower in the same period as last year. Building permits values are up seventeen point three percent. This is due primarily to new commercial permits, which will be a plus and be added to our taxable tax roll for next, next year. Current hotel motel taxes are up five point six percent, or sixty-one thousand dollars, and P U B cash transfers are, are trending higher. We're about eighty-three percent of total budget. concludes the presentation. You have any questions?
That's it?
Sure.
Good job. Thank you. Any questions?
Do we need to acknowledge?
Yes, just a...
Motion to acknowledge.
We need a motion to acknowledge in a second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Next, we have action item number twenty, consideration and action to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement between Texas Southmost College and the City of Brownsville B Metro to provide transportation services for students and the general public.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. I'm also going to be a little brief. As you know, we had entered into a pilot program with, with T S C back in January ninth, two thousand nineteen. It was a very successful program. And with that, we, we'd like to enter into a new agreement, an annual agreement with T S C and the City of Brownsville, along with B Metro, now known as multimodal transportation, to provide transportation services for T S C students with a valid I D. Route fourteen will be realigned and previous, as previously established in the pilot program, it's in your Exhibit A. And also, we will provide unlimited free rides for the students with a valid I D on all fixed routes as well. And T S C will be providing subsidized service for us at the same time, as agreed in the, in the agreement.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
With your authorization, we'd like to have the city manager enter an agreement with T S C.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve in a second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have action item number twenty-one, consideration and action to award contract to Gig Neck Inc. for architectural consulting services in the amount of sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars with sixty-three cents, and surveying geotech services in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the B Metro East Side Transfer Station project.
As you may recall, I, I was, uh, we had, we're trying to do an, an A and E contract for the entire Tiger project. After further review and discussions with the city attorney, it's in our best interest to go back before you for your approval. We're going to separate the East Side Transfer Station from the rest of the projects, and the funding will be as, as previously approved by resolution on May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, through the Certificates Obligation Fund. So if, to continue this project with text dot, this is a federal highway contract for the construction piece of it, the C O's will pay for the, for the architectural design and survey, as mentioned.
Motion to approve?
Second?
A motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Stand adjourned.